I now call the September 6, 2022 Finance Committee Meeting to order at 6:45. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of claims?
I am Chair. I move we pay the claims in the amount of $325,083.11. The payroll and liabilities for A-1222 and A-2622 in the amount of $723,636.69 for a total of $1,048,719.80.
Second? Councilmember Pronto has the motion. Councilmember Salisbury has the second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Is there anything else we need to discuss tonight?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
No, Your Honor.
All right. With there being nothing, we adjourn at 6:45.
I now call the September 6, 2022 Finance Committee Meeting to order at 6:45. I now call the September 6, 2022 Finance Committee Meeting to order at 7:00 PM. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of claims?
I am Chair. I move we pay the claims in the amount of $325,083.11.
Councilmember Salisbury will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance,
The payroll and liabilities for A-1222 and A-2622 in the amount of $723,636.69
and Mayor Larson is going to lead us in invocation.
May I?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
for a total of $1,048,719.80.
Second?
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,
Councilmember Salisbury has the motion. Councilmember Salisbury has the second.
with liberty and justice for all.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Is there anything else we need to discuss tonight?
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to be here
I have nothing, Your Honor.
and strive to serve our friends and neighbors on City Council.
No, Your Honor.
All right. With there being nothing, we adjourn at 6:45.
Father, we would ask that thou would watch over the first responders, our police department, our firefighters, that are so in need. Bless they and their families. Bless us, Father, that we might be mindful to follow our pledge to help and to make Riverton a better place. We are thankful for all our blessings. We say this name thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
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 I was hoping to get a rise out of you, Kyle, but they made you the mayor on this agenda. Anything you want to do, now's your time. So, would the City Clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilwoman Carla Borders.
Here.
Councilwoman Lindsey Cox.
Here.
Councilwoman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilwoman Dean Pronto.
Here.
Councilwoman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Kristy Salisbury.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here. I declare that we have a quorum present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Borders has a motion, and Councilwoman Cox has a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Communication from the floor. Citizens comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is scheduled for a public hearing will be given the opportunity to speak during this public hearing, during that public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the council on any other item may speak now. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Hi, I'm Dani Santti, and I'm the Vice President of the Berman Knight Riders 4-H Club.
I'm Dennis Thornock, and I'm the Parliamentarian of the Berman Knight Riders 4-H Club.
And I'm Jackson Hill, and I'm a member of the Berman Knight Riders 4-H Club.
So, we're here to request permission to put up flags down Main Street for National at 4-H Week, well, on October 2nd through the 9th. It's just kind of to help promote 4-H, trying to get our image out there.
What's going to be on the flag?
It's just our 4-H emblem, and so like, we have white flags that have the green emblem on them, and then green flags with white on them.
Super. Any questions? Anybody in favor of that?
I am.
Do we need a vote? I think you can do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming. We appreciate it. I hope your arm gets better. Would the City Clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, August 16, 2022.
Your Honor.
Regular Council meeting.
Hold on. There was one more.
One more? Excuse me. All right. Got to be quick, though. We appreciate you.
My name's Julie Buller, and I'm a board member for the Y Riverton Chamber and Visitor Center, and I would like to introduce our new executive director, Sam Towers. We're excited to have him here. He moved here from Idaho. And, like I said, we're excited. He's hit the ground running last Friday, and he's already been out to, maybe some of you guys are ready. So, Sam, everybody, you can see all their names. Welcome, Sam. And we're going to get him around town, helping us out, doing as much as we can, so.
I'll be out and about.
Hey, Sam, come up and shake our hands. We appreciate you.
He's got five kids, so we're going to embrace him in our community.
Welcome.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome, Sam.
I again.
Oh, you got those guys.
Oh.
We got him now.
Just really happy to be here. We're from the good side of Idaho, which is the closest one to Wyoming. So it's pretty similar. We really like the area. Like I said, we've got five kids. They're all in the school district here in town. They're making friends and having a good time. You guys have a really thriving, I don't know about the before, but what I see is a really thriving city and opportunity here. So I just spent about 20 years in public service. So now working on the private sector end of it and really looking forward to getting things moving and shaking here. So call me with any questions you have for the Y Riverton Chamber and Visitor Center. Make sure I get that right.
Thanks, Sam.
Change there, so, all right.
Appreciate you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And now I'm still Julie Buller representing the Edge Committee. And I just have a request and actually from you guys, maybe a little bit of direction from you guys. And we need your help because I'm hearing out there that there are a lot of people that are not planning on voting for the one-half percent economic development tax when it comes up again. I had a long discussion with somebody today and the discussion was basically based around the fact that we're not allocating that money the way that the community thought we were going to allocate it. And of course, we make the recommendations to you guys and then you guys approve those recommendations. And I think some of you on the council already have expressed your concerns that we're not supporting youth sports. And so my question to this person when I was having this discussion was, what would you like us to be allocating this money towards? I mean, we can't specifically pick out hockey, soccer, baseball. I mean, we can give little dollars here and there, but as a committee member, what we're looking at when we make those recommendations to you guys is what's going to have the biggest impact for our economy so that we can increase those revenues and do more with our monies down the road. But I am concerned that that tax won't pass again because we are making maybe not the same recommendations that the community thinks that we should be making. So if you guys, while you're out there advocating for your reelection, if you can find out from your constituents what it is that they want us to be making recommendations on and what we can do different with that money because we certainly need that tax to pass. I mean, that, I think, I don't, I assume all of you guys support that tax. But it's huge for our community to have an impact and continue moving forward with the efforts that we've been doing unless we have that tax. So if you guys could help us with that, advocate for us, come to our meetings, you know, maybe we could have a meeting with you guys and sit down and see what you guys are hearing from your constituents and see how we should be relooking at those funds. I mean, we know what the basis of them are. It's for economic development and generating jobs and revenue. But if we lose out on the sports people, I'm for that vote passing, I just, I just don't want to see us lose that tax. So anything we can do to help, we need your guys' help and support with that. Okay?
Thank you.
And then I have one more question?
Yep.
So we've had discussions about the weed committee. Should I wait and save those comments for when that comes up on the agenda or? And the reason I ask that is because there's people here in the audience that would speak to that as well on Recreation Path and Weeds that I've been recruiting.
Okay.
To try to help with our efforts.
We were going to announce that and maybe we can go to a point where they can, could we have open mic at that point or not?
Your Honor, we don't have anything on the agenda tonight for the weed committee that we discussed. I know you were hoping to create a resolution for that.
Mm-hmm.
But as far as agenda item this evening, there is nothing on there. And so if Ms. Buller wants to have other people speak, I think that would be the moment to do that if it was your prerogative.
And why don't you have them speak right now and comment?
And just so you know, the discussion was that we're, there's several of us in the community that would like to help with the weed control around here, come up with a formalized plan so that we can help control the weeds around here and also things that we can help do with the Recreation Path. And so there are people out here that have stepped to the plate and said that they would help. Bill's Litter Lover said he would help us out. There's some volunteers that are sitting out here that have asked me questions when I was speaking with them that I don't have the answers to their questions. And so if any of them want to speak now, I'll let them come up and ask those questions of you. But please know that, you know, there are people out there in the community that are willing to step to the plate, help put together a plan and, you know, action on it too, not just come up with a plan, but something that we can do around town to help. I know personally, my husband and I have been trying to work on the rec path out there on Riverview because we would use that all the time. And I guess one of the things that sticks in my mind is I'm hearing about these grants that are out there for bike safety and making yourself a bike safety town. We got bike, we call them the racks, the bike racks that the chamber got through the help of the Winter of Visitors Council. Well, you got to get people to those bike paths or to those bike racks. And personally, I have a bit of a distance, what is that little jaunt between where we live to the actual rec path? I don't know how far that stretch it is, but it's really short. I'm looking at Kyle because he's my neighbor. And personally, I don't want to be out on that path trying to get to town or get to town on that 40 mile an hour speed limit with those people on my back. So it becomes a safety issue. So maybe there are more funds out there that we can take a look at trying to tap into for making us a bike safety, you know, town. And the other thing too with that Recreation Path is that I'll help do whatever I need to, my husband, but but we don't have the right industrial equipment to do that. I mean, I'm out there with my sweep broom and my rake and my little weed chopper thing. I can only get so much done. Eight hours and it looks like I didn't do anything. I'll give the sweat and labor, but I need the materials, industrials, materials to help do that kind of work, to have an impact on it, so.
Well, and so what we did, so everybody knows that's in the audience, we did call two co-chairs, which is Alan Moore and Rod Baldus. And they both agreed that they would be glad to chair that. And so now what we're looking for is actual members of that committee that would like to help us support that activity. So if we start now, the problem is we don't think about weeds until they're about a foot tall. And so what we really need to do is start through the winter and be ready for what we want to do coming out in the, in the spring. And so we will take anybody who is wanting to participate in that activity and we'll put them on that committee. And we will get maps of the city and we will designate the areas that we'd like to maintain care of. One of the problems with weeds is they're actually the property of the landowner. And so we need to get that across also, that people need to take care of their own responsibility and take care of those weeds. That isn't being done really well, but we've had some really good success and we'll talk about that a little later in tonight's meeting. But if, if there's members, citizens out there that would like to speak to this subject, why don't you come on up and, and give us your thoughts?
And I don't know if these specifically want to speak to the weeds as much as the Recreation Path, you know, trying to, you know, get overlays and repairs and that kind of stuff. Those were more of the discussions that I've had with some of the people that are sitting out here today. But I was just letting you know some of the people that would be interested in being on the weed, weed portion. I mean, they go kind of hand in hand, you know, restoring our rec paths and maintaining them. I know I've tried to find out where I can get monies and Jim Gores and his group get money from the rec boards. And so I guess if I just need to get in, you know, we get the city together with these groups and figure out, we've got more people now that are interested in helping with this. How can we all be a part of that, basically is what we're asking because we all want to maintain our rec paths and do what we need to with them, so. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address us on any of those subjects?
Good evening, Council. I wasn't planning on talking about this, but when Julie mentioned the one and a half cent tax, this feels really close. I thought that it would be important to remind you as you are out campaigning, talking about things that it's important that we do educate our public, re-educate them on what the letter of the tax was when it was written. And that is the decisions that the Edge Committee makes their recommendations based on. If, and I love sports. I love baseball. I go as, you know, as often as I can. I like soccer. I like basketball, all of that stuff. Love to go to hockey games. But if they're not, if those clubs can't show that they are creating new jobs, it knocks them right out. That is a requirement based on the way that tax was written. So if our community wants to change that writing the next time around, then it would free up the Edge Committee to make those recommendations. And I think people don't understand that and I think it's important that we explain that to them so that we aren't looking like we're just giving money to favorites or pet projects or whatever the misconception is because that's not the case. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, everyone. Kip Post. I just wanted to throw in a little bit, I'm on the board for the Fremont County Weed and Pest as well. And so that committee, it would be a good idea for maybe those chairs or someone on the committee to come to a Weed and Pest meeting, talk to them. Just last year, Weed and Pest allocates money to the municipalities in different amounts. It was somewhat surprising. Lander has some weeds that classify differently so they can ask for a little bit more money. Last year, I think Weed and Pest gave Lander 30,000 and Riverton about 5,000. And that was because that's all Riverton asked for. Now, some of that is tied into the type of weeds and the way Riverton, or Lander has leafy spurge. And so there's a little bit more money that can go there because of that. But I think it would be a good conversation to have, and I'm on the board, but I'm not an expert on all the different types of weeds and what money you can get for what. But to have that committee come and at least chat with the, with the Weed and Pest Board and see if there's a way we can increase the amount of money that Weed and Pest is able to give the city, so. Just food for thought.
Super. We'll do that.
We'll get better weeds.
Yeah. Are these? Yeah. Get some Lander weeds, yeah.
Be careful how you say that.
Lander weed.
Good evening. My name's Rusty McDonald and I'm here, I met Julie on the walking path today. I'm an avid walker and she had just mentioned some of her concerns and I don't, mine isn't so much of a concern as just a question because we got to talking about the weed problem along the path and who's responsible for that. And I know you said it's landowners, but a lot of that land along that path is
Right of way.
Right of way, yeah. So, and it has been recently mowed. But we also came along or started to talk about the snow removal, which I'm always thankful for the snow being removed so I can take a walk even though it's, you know, 19 degrees or whatever. But the question came up is whose responsibility is it, the snow removal? I know a couple of the people that live around us get out there and plow the, the path to a certain point. But is that city's responsibility or?
I, I don't know if, if that is ours. I do know we've put the broom on it before and swept it, but I don't know that there's a direct responsibility to that. So Kyle, can you speak to that?
Yeah, Your Honor, and we'd be happy to share a map with you to show which areas the city does maintain for those walking paths and which are the responsibility of the adjoining property owner. Happy to share our contact information.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you.
Make sure we get that information.
Okay.
Okay. And we'll try to get that information out so others can have it too, okay?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. If you get all the answers right, you get a business card. That's the night's door prize, so. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on any of those subjects? Seeing none, we'll move on. Now, Kristen, would you, would you be willing to please read us the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, August 16th, 2022 Regular Council Meeting. Approval of the minutes, August 16th, 2022 Executive Session Meeting. Approval of the minute, September 6th, 2022 Finance Committee Meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee Recommendations for September 6th, 2022. And two Open Container Permit Applications. The first from Michael Guston for a block party on East Fremont Avenue from 10th Street to 12th Street on September 9th, 2022 from 5:00 P.M. to 12:00 A.M. And the second for Central Wyoming College for a potluck dinner at Sunset Park on September 9th, 2022 from 5:00 P.M. to 7:00 P.M. And a replat for the Thompson subdivision, a portion of Lot 19 of the Stratton subdivision, petitioner Timothy and Lynn Thompson.
Thank you. Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor, the Finance Committee met earlier this evening and approved the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $325,083.11 payroll and liabilities for August 12th and August 26th, 2022 in the amount of $723,636.69 for a total of $1,048,719.80.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Larson has a motion and Councilwoman Salisbury has a second. Any council discussion?
I've seen my vote for any warrants paid to traveling computers or YONET.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We have a new dispatcher, Camille Bench, that is going to be given the oath of office. And Chief, if you wanted to start us on that?
Your Honor, I would. Thank you. Your Honor and City Council, I would like to introduce Camille Bench and her husband and kids. So Camille has worked for the Riverton Police Department for about six months. She graduated from Du Bois. She's married to Travis, who is the sheriff's deputy. She enjoys hiking outdoors and spending time with her family. So Mayor, if you would come down and swear her in, that would be fantastic.
Raise your right hand square. I solemnly swear I will support, obey and defend Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the state of Wyoming. That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment. Or caused it to be done by others. And that I will discharge my duties of my office with medellin. Congratulations. Glad to have you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Welcome. Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Chief. We appreciate it. Community Spotlight, and this is a spot that I've asked for. And Greg Townsend, Greg Talibus is in the audience and I want to explain a few things to you about Greg. He's been around a whole lot. been around a whole lot over the years, and we've been friends for a long time. And we had a discussion here in the City Council Hall about some problems down in his neighborhood. And instead of just sitting back and complaining, he grabbed hold of the problems and he shouldered up the weight. And so in doing so, he's done some remarkable work. And he's also started a neighborhood watch, which I didn't know that I would receive those tonight. The city is so efficient that I got this many more for you to pass out. So I'll bring those down to you, too. So why don't we meet at the microphone there?
Are you going to push from there?
Magic.
Oh, thank you very much, Mayor. That is wonderful. I appreciate you.
You're great.
Oh, certainly. Hold it before I call a park cake.
That's right.
Thank you for everything you do.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you. I appreciate that kind words.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
From time to time, we have a graffiti problem in town that we would like to solve. And earlier in the year, Frontier Academy helped us with some of this. And so these are some pictures of graffiti. Kyle, would you keep moving through? These are on the back of Motel Six. And so you can see what they were, and then you can see what they turned into. And so Greg was kind enough to, how he got involved was the discussion led to the weeds that were down in his neighborhood. And when they, Councilwoman Cox sent her boys down, I believe, to cut the weeds on that shed. And when they did, they found some graffiti. And Greg is a painter by trade, and so he quickly said he could take care of that. So he took care of that shed. This is still in the alley behind the Motel Six. And so what we did do is we contacted the owners of these buildings, and they paid for the paint, if I get the invoice to them, right? And then Greg came along and tried to fix those things up. And so this is the Riverton Sheep Meadows building that was quite marked up. And Greg just painted the south side of the building, but he did such a good job that he made an arrangement with the owner to paint the front of the building. So you can see what a good job he does. This is the big O-Tire building, and it's, this graffiti wasn't as noticeable when the motel was still up. But when they took that wing of the motel off, it was real apparent. This is a new location for our new Steakhouse. Steakhouse. And so that's nice to have that taken care of. This is the only one that we don't have taken care of yet that we've identified, and it's on our list to go get it. And it's on a storage unit out on the way out on Riverview Adams. And then this is the Frontier Academy that helped us. And these are located down behind the old Gary Broderick's building. And they came down in a nice sunny day in the late winter and painted these out for us. And so if you do know of some graffiti that is in town that you would like to have taken out, or even if you want to help do that, we would be glad to participate in that and get the supplies and maybe some help to do it. We really appreciate what you do for us. Thank you.
My pleasure.
This last picture is a result of Mike Miller, our community development director, and myself a week ago Wednesday. I believe so, yes. We went all the way up and down federal, asking business owners to take care of their weeds. And Saturday, he was out. He didn't want to give me his name, but he is the owner of Fritz's Auto. And so he was out doing his job that he told us he would do and get rid of those weeds. And we really do appreciate it. So thanks for your help. And everybody that's working on weeds, thanks for their So we do have some people that are interested in a weed project. And what I have done is ask Alan Moore and Rod Baldus if they would chair that committee. They caught me about a year ago in the park and wanted that, wanted to have us do something about weeds. And so this is an interesting dichotomy, because the Lord does a really good job with weeds, and they're everywhere. And they seem to grow right through pavement. And so what I hope to do with this committee, and anybody that's listening that would like to be on the committee, if they would certainly send in a written application or phone call or anything that would put us into conversation, we would like to form a committee that people could come together during the late fall and winter and come up with an idea on how to accomplish maybe even some sterilization of some ground and some weed spray. The city has access to a lot of equipment, but we're also handicapped by our, who can use that equipment. And so we do have citizens like Julie Bowler and Ray Bowler that would be willing to run mowers and those kinds of things. And so possibly, we can find those pieces of equipment in the community. We can work with the county and use their spraying equipment and get to the point where we can take care of those things. One of our big problems is that we want to make sure that we don't bother other people's crops that they are trying to grow and those types of things. And so we'll have to pay attention to those things. But we'll move forward with that. And anybody in the audience tonight that would like to be on those committees, if you'd just give us your contact information, we'll make sure you get on that committee. Thank you. Item eleven is Presentation of the Constitutional Week Proclamation. For the Daughters of the American Revolution members present. And I'll bring that proclamation down if, are they
Yeah, I'll give a little background. Little background on Constitution Week. Constitution Week was first recognized in nineteen fifty-six by signing of a public law by President Eisenhower. The purpose of Constitution Week is to emphasize citizens' responsibility for protecting and defending the Constitution, to inform people that the Constitution is basis for America's great heritage and the foundation for our way of life, encourage the study of the historical events, which led to the framing of the Constitution in September seventeen eighty-seven. Constitution Week runs from September seventeenth through the twenty-third. It was basically an event pushed by the Daughters of the American Revolution and signed, as I said, by President Eisenhower. The D A R is an organization of women. There are a hundred and ninety thousand D A R members in the country, three thousand chapters, all fifty states, some foreign countries. Wyoming has ten D A R chapters. I represent Fremont Chapter, which is for Fremont County. We have members all over the county, plus some from out of state. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. The next one is Hungry Action Month Proclamation. Sarah, you want to tell us which organization?
Good evening, Council. Real quick, my name is Sarah Lucas. I am with the organization called Foundations for Nations. It is a nonprofit that my husband and I started five years ago. We moved here from Chicago, and we started a small little church here in your town. And as we became pastors, phone calls started flooding in about food, people needing food. And so four years ago, we started Foundations for Nations Food Bank, and we partnered with Wyoming Food Bank of the Rockies and the TFAP, which is the Federal Emergency Food Programming for Fremont County. And so we've been doing that hard for four years, fighting the food hunger insecurity in this county. And I just want to give you a little bit of statistics of what that looks like for the state of Wyoming. So one in eight people in Wyoming fight food insecurity. Twenty thousand of them are children, and fourteen percent of them are senior citizens. So Fremont County is the five, top five poorest counties out of the twenty-three counties in our state. And we're in the top ten poorest cities out of the ninety-nine towns in Wyoming. And so what that says is this is what our numbers, our little Foundations for Nations Food Bank feeds. This year alone, we will be on track for fifteen thousand people that have come through our food bank alone. We average about a thousand people a month. During COVID, we were averaging ten thousand every two months. We were running to Wyoming Food Bank to Casper every Monday to bring food down. I know Bike Bailey stepped in to help, but I know even Dean and his family stepped in to help. But right now, with inflation, we keep on getting higher demand on food. And so with that being said, with September being Hunger Action Month, with me be part of Governor Gordon's Wife's Food Hunger Initiative program for Wyoming, we need our city to combat, combat that hunger as well. Our foundation has been paying it out of our own pocket since we've been here for the last five years. We would like to see our city come and be a part of that. Last month, we ran out of food. So last month, it came out of our staff's personal pocketbook. And the reason why I am so advocate about it was I grew up, my parents struggled. I grew up with my parents not always able to put things on the table. And so when I started getting those calls and knowing that children are going to bed hungry, I could not ignore what my heart had seen. And so I'm coming here to, you know, say to you guys, thank you for all that you do for your community. But not, don't turn a head to the hunger in this community. It's a big thing. And just a little bit about our background, we didn't just come here just to start a church, but we, our mission statement for our church is reaching people, impacting communities. And so we don't just have the food bank. We have ninety kids in our summer day camp program that we feed every day for six weeks because they would not have a meal. So ninety of those kids are at risk youth in our community that were needing to be fed every day. We also are now starting, we bought a home, a four thousand square foot home, that we are turning into a domestic violence shelter and will be the only safe shelter for Riverton. And so we really do care about our community, not just the church. God wants us to do those things, move in action. But we can't just ignore those things and talk about it. We have to do something about it. So with September being Food Hunger Month, I encourage our community to get behind it. Let's fight the needs here in Riverton. Thank you.
Thank you. We probably should just adjourn with that, but I think we've got more pages here. I appreciate all of those people that are actively working to improve Riverton. It means a lot, and I appreciate what they do. We'll go to item thirteen, which is a public hearing in consideration for fireworks permit application for the Riverton High School. City Clerks report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor and Council, before you tonight for your consideration is the annual fireworks permit application submitted by the Riverton High School Activities Director, seeking approval to detonate a cannon at the Riverton High School home football games. The conditions of the permit application have been completed. The proper fee has been paid. The letter of recommendation from the fire chief has been received and is in your packet. The proper notice to the public has been advertised. There is also a map in your packet which shows where the cannon will be detonated. Mr. Miller is in the audience tonight for the public hearing as required by code, and also if you have any other questions. Based on the information provided, staff recommends approval of the fireworks permit application.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open a public hearing in consideration of the Riverton High School's fireworks permit application.
So moved.
Councilman Larson has the motion. Councilman Peronto has the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statute and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium. Identify yourself for the record. Seeing none, that want to speak, the Chair would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Larson has the motion. Councilman Bailey has the second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the Riverton High School fireworks permit as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Cox has the motion. Councilwoman Salisbury has the second. Discussion.
I hope we hear it this weekend.
Yeah, it would be nice to hear it this weekend, that's for sure. Councilman Bailey and myself were in a conversation Friday, and the homeowner lives up there close to the high school. And her husband and she were sitting in the chair, and the cannon went off. And that was the first time they had information that the cannon was going to go. And so we would like to get the word out that this is, this idea is to celebrate the activities on the football field. So when we score any scores, is that correct, Mr. Miller? If we get a field goal or a safety or a touchdown, that cannon will be ignited. And so we don't want to scare anybody, but we hope it goes off a lot. We're putting our money on that side of the equation. And so we appreciate what you do up there at the high school and what the kids do. So. Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Several years ago, the cannon was not used that entire year. So last year, we were favored to have it. So, last year, we were favored to have it. That's been a practice for at least two thousand fourteen forward. And it's unusual that you could live there that long and not hear the cannon. So I'm, anyway, it's a good thing, I think.
That is a good thing. We appreciate it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Bid award for airport pickup. Operations Divisions Managers report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. In front of the Council tonight, excuse me, is a request for a bid award on a two thousand twenty-two half-ton Chevrolet four-wheel-drive pickup for the airport in the amount of forty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars. This truck was bid on August sixth and the bid opening on August sixteenth. We had budgeted forty thousand dollars for the project, and if approved tonight, the remaining two thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars would have to be absorbed in the operations budget.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of one two thousand twenty-two Chevy half-ton four-wheel-drive work truck in the amount of forty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars from Fremont Chevrolet Buick GMC of Riverton.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion, Councilman Peronto has the second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. This is an interesting thought. Bid award for a wide-area mower. Operations Divisions Managers report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. In, again, on August sixth, two thousand twenty-two, the city of Riverton began advertising for bids for a wide-area mower for the Parks Department. We opened those bids on August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We only had one bidder, which is Stoats Equipment Company in Casper, Wyoming, or in Evansville, in the amount of seventy-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. We budgeted sixty-eight thousand dollars for the project. If approved, remaining thirty-six fifty would have to be absorbed in the capital line item, which we will be able to do because of the next bid award. But it would be our recommendation to go ahead and move forward with the award on this one.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of one new two thousand twenty-two John Deere sixteen-hundred series three wide-area mower for the amount of seventy-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars from Storrs Equipment in Evansville, Wyoming.
So moved.
Councilwoman Cox has the motion, Councilman Bailey has the second. Further discussion?
Can that sucker be used on weeds?
I was going to say.
Used on weeds, I would suppose you couldn't hold it back.
It's twice as much money as a pickup truck.
Yeah.
How wide is it?
Eleven feet? Eleven foot.
That's what I thought, eleven feet. So...
Drive that up and down Maine.
Yeah, I don't know why we couldn't get better weed control, don't you? I think we can, so. I appreciate that. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Bid award for zero-turn mower. Operation Division Managers report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Once again, on August sixth, we, the city began advertising bids for a new two thousand twenty-two model zero-turn mower. We opened those bids again on the sixteenth of August. We budgeted thirty-one thousand dollars for the project total, and the bid came in at seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty, or thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars under budget, which will be the part of the capital line item that we'll be able to pay for the overage on the other mower.
That should fix the other two, right? Okay. Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the purchase of one new two thousand twenty-two John Deere Z nine-nine-four-R mower for seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars from Storrs Equipment in Evansville, Wyoming.
So moved.
Councilwoman Borders has the motion, Councilwoman Cox has the second. Further discussion?
If one's good, two's better to get weeds.
Yeah. Put them in tandem, one off the other, so. Why did you, why were you budgeted at thirty-one thousand? Was there...
Early estimates.
Yeah, the estimate was pretty high.
The estimates were way high, a lot higher than we suspected.
So did that estimate come from dealers, or was it just one that you put in the...
No, we solicited, actually, full retail quotes, budget quotes, so we have a rough idea of what we're looking at budget-wise.
So this does have a motor and a seat?
Yes, it does.
Okay. All right.
And four tires.
And tires. What a deal.
But no steering wheel.
Oh, the steering.
Zero turn.
That's what saved the money.
No turning.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Resolution number fourteen fifty-six, Department of Justice Grant Application. Chief of Police report, please.
Your Honor, thank you very much. The Riverton Police Department wishes to submit a grant application to the Bureau of Justice Assistance to repair two dispatch consoles for the Riverton Police Department Dispatch. If approved, the funds from the grant would go to repairing two dispatch consoles. Each console has a mechanism which allows them to be raised or lowered to work or stand, to work standing or sitting. The mechanisms are no longer working, so they're put together by two-by-fours, Your Honor. So this request would be to fund, basically fixing those dispatch consoles. And Sarah Nelson is the head dispatcher, she's here to answer any questions.
Would the clerk please read Resolution number fourteen fifty-six by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed Resolution Number fourteen fifty-six, a resolution of the governing body of the city of Riverton, authorizing the submission of an Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant to the Bureau of Justice Assistance to repair the two dispatch consoles in the Riverton Police Department Dispatch Center.
Thank you very much. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number fourteen fifty-six for the submission of an Edward Bryant Memorial Justice Assistance Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Peronto has the motion, Councilwoman Borders has the second. Further discussion? So what's wrong with the two-by-fours? They don't, they don't go up and down as...
They need different-sized two-by-fours.
Sarah, do you want to go up to the mic real quick in case I have questions? Your Honor, Sarah loves public speaking.
That's why we're in dispatch behind a phone. But no, so these dispatch consoles are over ten years old. The grant actually will only cover the cost to fix one, and then we could use some of the leftover monies to replace other items because it is such a high-dollar fix. I think one of my quotes is for six thousand dollars for one console. But again, these are, well, they actually have to be twelve years because I've been with the city twelve years in October, and they were there before I started.
Sarah, how much does it, how much does it cost to replace a console brand-new?
I don't, I think when we were originally looking, it was forty thousand dollars to redo the whole center. I, I'm, that was a while back that we did those quotes, but...
Well, we'll see if we can get you some, okay?
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Lease agreement for the state of Wyoming Department of Administration and Information General Services City Administrators report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. This agreement is really a renewal of an agreement we've had for several years. In two thousand twelve, the city received a loan package from Y.Aeronautics to construct a facility. That facility is now being leased to the Division of Criminal Investigation, or DCI. And it was shortly after the facility was completed that DCI came in and leased the building. The loan from Y.Aeronautics for the facility is a twenty-year loan, and we have five-year lease agreements with DCI. We just recently expired one of our terms with them, and it's time to re-up that lease. DCI is interested in staying in the space, I think they're pretty happy there. Agreement has gone through Department of ANI Administration and Information and the Attorney General. Our attorney has also reviewed the lease, the new lease, but really, it's an extension of the old one, it's just a new term, and there are very minimal changes, if any, as you look between the previous lease and the new lease. As a point of information, the current loan balance on the facility that DCI leases is two hundred and forty-eight thousand forty-eight dollars. There is a five percent interest rate on that, and the loan maturity date is two thousand thirty-two. Staff does recommend that city council exercise and its authority to execute this lease. If approved, it generates thirty-eight thousand five hundred per year for the five years, and the revenue is used to pay the debt service for the loan that we do have with Y.Aeronautics. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the real estate property lease number eight-dash-zero-nine-six-two-four, agreement between the Riverton, the city of Riverton and the state of Wyoming Department of Administration and Information General Service Division.
So moved.
Councilman Bailey has the motion, and Councilwoman Cox has the second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. So we're now at Reports and Comments, Council Committee Reports and Council Members Roundtable. Dean, could you start us off?
Absolutely. I haven't attended any meetings since our last meeting, so I don't have anything to report there, but, boy, I will say, it has been a very fast summer. I can't believe how quickly it's gone, having all those kids in the, in the school behind my house. There's always a joy this time of year because they're out there screaming and running around like little crazy chickens. It's kind of fun. But it's amazing that school's back in and we're starting football and a cannon, and it's like, wow, here we go again. It's another school year.
It is, isn't it?
It is.
It's been a fast summer. Thank you. Mike, do you have anything?
Again, seems like it's been a month since we met, but it's only been a couple of weeks. But I have not either had any meetings, other than, again, you and I met with the citizen regarding some issues up around the school district, and we're going to try to work on those and see if we can't get some things taken care of.
Appreciate it.
And we'll make sure we let her know that the cannon's going to go off, hopefully a lot, so.
Lindsay?
I met with the, at the senior center for the senior endowment meeting, and it was a pretty quick meeting, but one thing we got done was we approved to install new parking blocks, and Mia said that when she drove by, they're actually already in, so that was really a quick turnaround, but that was good.
I saw them putting them in today.
Yeah, and so they all just need painted, and then that's one improvement we can check off the list. The rec board meets next Monday.
Twenty-five rec board.
Yep. And that's all I've had since the last meeting.
Thank you. Kyle?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a few items.
Wrong, Kyle.
Oh, my God.
Mayor Kyle.
Mayor, Mayor Kyle.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, Councilman.
You're okay. I haven't had any meetings, but I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Towers when he came into my office, and I'm thrilled that he took the position, the job, and he has some good ideas, I think, that will benefit from them. He's been in public service for a long time, and now he's in five-oh-three-C heaven, and I think he can do a good job. I told him, I thought that there was three things that we could do in Riverton that would cure all problems, and he leaned forward in his chair, and I said, jobs, jobs, and jobs. And he agreed with that and said, well, there's one more. And I said, what's that? He said, more jobs. So with that, I am comfortable that we have new leadership there, and that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Kristy?
Well, the only meeting we didn't have yet is the chamber meeting, and I think it's been covered. The next meeting is on the fifteenth, but I look forward to working with Mr. Towers as well, and I appreciate Janet for all that you've done for the chamber.
Thank you. And Carla?
Your Honor, I have not attended any meetings since we last met. I did want to mention a couple of things. Paws and Pearls is working on their banquet this Saturday eve, or is it Saturday? Yeah, Saturday evening at six. You can, let's see, you can get ahold of, let me see, I don't see a contact on here, but you could probably call Paws and get, get ticket information. They're having a band to play to dinner. Lots of stuff on Go Riverton, so check it out. That's all I've got.
Where's the location of Paws's?
I believe it's at the...
St. Margaret's.
St. Margaret's, okay.
Thank you. Now, Kyle, jump in.
Thank you, Your Honor. As mentioned before, I do have a few things, and I would like to say that'll probably be the only time that'll ever happen, but I can't. I apologize. I was really excited to report that the Safety Committee that you guys passed the resolution supporting, the last meeting has already had a meeting and is underway, so we're moving forward, and thanks to Mike Miller and his committee for doing that. We also are appreciative of Mia Harris and Kristen Watson for their involvement with WAMCAT. They will be attending the annual meeting next week, and Kristen is also a member of that board, and so we appreciate their involvement and representation with WAMCAT. There will be a Fix Our Road Citizen Committee meeting this upcoming Monday at eleven AM, and then we will have Airport Board this upcoming Friday, not this Friday, but the following Friday, excuse me, at eight AM as well, so it's the third Friday of the month at eight AM. And I thought that it would be helpful at this time to just provide a little bit of information about the Weed and Pest Program that the city of Riverton does run, and Mr. Post, I apologize, he came up and referenced a number, and I kind of raised my eyebrow, but he was absolutely correct, and so I apologize for that. When it comes to Weed and Pest, the city of Riverton receives a lot of its revenue to operate that cost center from three sources right now, the first of which is designated by statute. We exercise home rule authority, for lack of a better term, to manage Weed and Pest in our area, rather than let the Weed and Pest District do that for us. And there's a few benefits to that in that if we ceded our control of our own city to the Weed and Pest District, they would only be able to address what they would determine as noxious weeds and pests and not necessarily nuisance Weed and Pest. What's the difference? Noxious Weed and Pests are basically leafy spurge, Russian knaffweed and others, and then just recently, the Weed and Pest District did not include mosquitoes, or more specifically, the Culex tarsalis, as a noxious pest. It was rather a nuisance pest. So there's a benefit to the city of Riverton maintaining control of that, and since we opt into it by statute, we receive a certain amount of monies generated for that district. Since, on average, over the last four fiscal years, that generates about seventy-six thousand dollars that comes into the city of Riverton that's specific to Weed and Pest abatement. On average, the cost center for that is eighty-five thousand over the same period, fiscal years nineteen through twenty-two. We also receive monies to specifically abate... We also receive monies to specifically abate mosquitoes, and that's through the state's emergency mosquito, excuse me, emergency insect management program, and we average about twenty-six thousand for that. And what that does is helps us provide the Achilles' fish, the larvicide, and the adulticide or the fogging that goes on. So that's where the revenue sources come from, and as Mr. Post accurately communicated to you, just recently, the city of Riverton participated in what's called a special management grant program. Aaron Foster, who manages the weed and pest program, reached out to the city about a year ago and said, you, you really need to participate in this. Now, the special management program, our monies in addition to what is designated by statute that I referenced, that average of about seventy-six thousand, it can only be used for leafy spurge mitigation and Russian knaffweed mitigation. And so, as we've prepared internally areas that have Russian knaffweed and leafy spurge and what we believe is inaccurate accounting for the staff time and the chemical, it averages about five thousand dollars, and we only started doing that last year. We applied for it again this fiscal year. So that's a bit of a rundown of our weed and pest program. There is one employee in that cost center, and that employee is actually split between our Streets and Alley's division. So half the year, they put on a weed and pest hat, the other year, they put on a Streets and Alley's hat, and they're split, their salary is split between both cost centers. We also try and budget seasonal employees in that cost center, one of whom is perennial seasonal, and that's an individual that comes back and helps us with the fogging each year. We try and get another seasonal to help us specifically with weed mitigation. Unfortunately, this year, we've only been able to hire three of our available eight seasonal positions across the entire city. We've had a terrible time getting help, but we were able to at least dedicate one of those three to the weed and pest cost center. I know that's maybe a little bit more information than you were bargaining for, and it makes my report a little bit long, but I thought you would be benefited from hearing a little bit of where our revenues come from and what our expenses are for the weed and pest cost center. And with that, I'll be much shorter. I'm happy to announce that Mr. Eggleston, as of about two hours ago, accepted an interim position for Public Works Director. He will help manage the Public Works Department as we get into the advertisement process for a replacement, and Ms. Kristen Watson's already working very hard on preparing any material necessary that she can report back to you about that advertising process. Brian will be very valuable to ensure that I'm not a choke point in the services provided by the Public Works Department. For the last three weeks, I've tried to do this new position and the old position. I don't think we were doing justice to our citizens, and Brian will help ensure that we grease the skids a little bit better. With that, your honor, I am done.
Thanks, Kyle. Appreciate what you do do. It's a lot of work. I mentioned a little bit earlier, and I think a lot of tonight's meeting is focused on, on weeds, and Mike Miller, our community, community development director, is very active in that process. We've sent out hundreds of weed notices, and, and we're now to the point where we're having to send out citations for people that aren't willing to cooperate and do the work that they need to do with their weeds. Mike had a really good idea, and that idea encouraged, he asked if I would go with him and, and talk to people, and so we did. And we went all the way down the west side of Federal and got most of that, and then we went down a good portion of the, the east side of Federal, and I kind of watched that. And Walmart was our biggest offender by far, and we got to talk to their manager, and she was very, very helpful. And as you can imagine, there's a, a number of layers of how to get anything done through a large corporation that big, so it took her a few days, but she got right on the weeds that they had and took care of those. Almost everybody was very cordial. We had no problems, did we, Mike?
No, not at all, your honor.
Nobody confronted us on that, and, and to be real truthful, they got right out and took care of it, with the exception of, of one business that hasn't come through yet. Have you had a chance to talk to him again?
I have spoken to three of them, and I believe two of them are taken care of that we spoke to, and there is the one I have, I haven't been able to get ahold of yet.
So with that said, it isn't that, I know Julie has, has left, I know Julie's been cutting weeds, I've been cutting weeds, there's just a lot of us that are out there trying to cut weeds. It's been an exceptional weed year. We should put a license out and, and, and call it hunting season, and we probably could raise money on that if we just figured out how to process the meat. But everybody's trying really hard on that, and, and I do appreciate those who have volunteered and cut their weeds, and, and I would encourage those that haven't to please look at that and avoid that citation that might be coming their way. And I really appreciate Mike for being willing to, to take his time and, and go with me and, and ask those businesses to, to show and to set an example. I had the opportunity to go to our ECDAs meeting, and that was a good meeting, and lots of information was given to us there. I also had the opportunity, this has been a pet project of mine since I got to be the mayor. We have what are our heat bumps in our concrete, especially on the south end of Federal, and Webbwood Road seem to be real pronounced, and we, we, there's just, nobody has budget for it to pay for that, and, and I think it's a health and safety problem, and so we've worked our way around to maybe the Job Corps is gonna help us fix those, and we're gonna start with the two at the furthest south on the west side of Federal and replace those, and there are about three yards of mud in each one of those. And I talked with the, the state of Wyoming today. We had to apply for a permit. It's a no-cost permit, but I'll, I'll grab that paperwork tomorrow and bring it down, and we gotta fill it out, and everything goes through Byron, Wyoming. If you wanna, if you wanna put it in a culvert, it goes through Byron, Wyoming, so with that, we'll have to submit that to, to there, and those, those heat, heaves that we're getting, I think, are due to not enough expansion in the concrete, and so we'll put extra expansion in as we replace those, and, and we might be able to have the Job Corps kids learn a trade as they do that, and so that would be a, a double benefit to us. I got to attend a F tag meeting, the Fremont County Association of Government in Lander. That's, that's a really great meeting, and I appreciate everybody that goes to that, and we get a lot of things done. I do believe the weeds are looking better, and there's more and more of them getting cut, and we appreciate the people that are getting up and doing those and, and taking care of those, and we encourage them to continue to do that. City Administrator Butterfield arranged for us to have a meeting with senior staff of Brasso's staff out of the D.C. office last Wednesday, and we had a, he was able to speak with the FAST group to start with, and Kyle sent out some impressive information from the aeronautics stats that you got out of Jackson. And if anybody wants to be entertained and understand aeronautics, there's some real good information there, and amazing the amount of passengers that we move in and out of Wyoming. And for those that think that the airport, airport is not valuable, it is a, it is a lifeline to Wyoming and Fremont County, and it brings in a surge of outside dollars that are spent in our community, and we really need to pay attention to that. Julie Bowler's right. We need to get out and sell that half-cent tax. It is, it is a powerful tax. One of the things about that tax that's different from the four cent is we only get about seven to eight cents back on the dollar that we, that the community sends in on the four-cent tax. On the road tax, the one cent and the half cent, the state only takes a management fee and sends the balance of it back to us, so we go a lot further with those two taxes. And what the airport does, and Kyle, we really ought to put those, some of those more impressive pages of that report up for next, in two weeks, because there's some great information of how many, how many people are, are flown into Wyoming. It really is interesting. With that said, Kyle also set up a meeting with the All Nations gentleman that came in and spoke to us about speed limits and road conditions, and there are problems there that we need to solve and, and help, and Kyle's already sent city staff down to take a look at the speed limits and, and the road signs that are missing. He tells me that the, the road signs are named after different tribes, and they're kind of a trophy to get, so we keep losing street signs down there, so maybe we can stop that, but we do need to help that section of town and, and get behind those and, and help. And then Mike, Mike Bailey was kind enough to set up that appointment with that citizen up by the high school, and we will do our very best to help accommodate those arrangements to make that a pleasant area for the people, the residents of that location. Those are the, that's all the meetings that I attended. I appreciated all the information that's come through to me this last two weeks, and, we don't have an executive session tonight, so unless there's an objection from anyone on the dais, we will stand adjourned at eight nineteen p.m. Thank you.